In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you, and please call.
Okay. Joel Reese, Faraz Khan, and Michael Doherty all asked to be excused this evening. Shara Bithia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Alan Rich? Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepard?
Here.
Vaseem Verdas?
Here.
Chairman Thomas?
Here. Minutes of the regular meeting, September 7, 2023, is our motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second. Shara Bithia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas? Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Resolutions, Praise Presbyterian Church, ZBA 70028, extension of time, we hear our motion to approve.
There's only three people who can vote on that. That would be Alan Rich, Gary Rosenthal, oh, sorry, four, Vaseem Verdas, and yourself.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay. Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Parker at Somerset, ZBA 230015, need a motion.
Same group.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Yes.
Second.
Shara Bithia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. No discussion, moving to the hearings section. Endos Caterers, ZBA 230013, use variance and parking variance stopped by the applicant for a banquet facility, 3059 Route 27 Franklin Park, lot 34.01, lots 32.02, 34.04 in the NB zone, carried from November 2, 2023, with no further notification needed. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is John DeLuca. I'm here tonight representing Endos Caterers LLC. As the chairman mentioned, this property is located at 3059 Route 27. I just want to clarify that that's the only lot that is, that's the only property that's the subject of this application. We did amend our application to reduce the relief we're seeking. We are not seeking a use variance. We are only seeking a parking variance tonight. We have no plans to operate as a banquet hall. This is an application for a restaurant to expand its seating and obviously for the requisite parking variance associated with that expanded seating. But my witnesses will explain that in more detail so that you understand exactly what's being proposed and how operations would proceed under an approval. So my client leases property in October of '22. As I stated, they plan to expand the restaurant. They already have approved 54 seats. They'd like to add 50 seats. And it's a high-end Indian cuisine. As I mentioned, we're seeking a parking variance associated with those extra 50 seats. You're going to hear from two witnesses. You'll hear from one fact witness and you'll hear from a traffic engineer who will testify to the parking variance and how traffic on the property in and out will work. So without further ado, if I could bring up my first witness?
Just a quick question, so I'm sure, I understand it for sure. We're dealing with the mansion as it pertains to a parking variance. We're not involved in how the building might change or any of the construction issues or other site plan?
That is correct. There's no site plan associated with this. There's no construction associated with this. It's just operations. The floor plans that are part of this application that you see, the interior walls, the ingress and egress, all those are already in place. The only thing that we're requesting approval for is to be able to seat a certain number of people in the existing space. So, and in order to do that, we need a parking variance.
Okay. Thank you.
Not the parking. Not? Not the parking, right? Not the park. What do you mean, not the park? Are you going to be talking about parking? We will be talking about parking. That's the only, that's the only variance we are seeking is parking. We're not going to be talking about use. We're not going to be talking about site plan. Okay. Thank you.
Let me just, so we keep interrupting, I know, but you originally applied for a use variance for a banquet facility?
Correct.
Is somebody going to testify to why you're calling it, why it's a restaurant now?
This fact witness will testify.
Okay. Because you just said we're not going to talk about use, but you are going to talk about use.
Well, yeah, we will talk about operating.
Okay.
Fair enough, Mr. Healy.
I just wanted to make sure we're going to explain to the board, because again, your original application was for a use variance. Now it's not.
Yeah.
You need to explain to the board why that is.
Okay. Absolutely. So if you could introduce yourself to the board?
Hello, everyone. I'm the CEO at the Endos Caterers. And the reason I'm here today is...
Why don't you state your name for the record? Just state your name for the record and then I'll just swear you in.
My name is Ben Saxena.
Oh, your last name again for the record?
S-A-X-E-N-A.
You swear or affirm any testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So why don't you go into what you were going to say, introduce yourself to the board and your involvement in this operation?
So basically, we are asking for 50 seats as an overflow for the restaurant. If, not every day a restaurant is going to be needing 100 seats, but on the weekends when the restaurant is busy, so we can move from A restaurant to the B restaurant, that's called overflow. Back in the time, as you said, we were asking for the banquet facility, which is, which was causing more traffic and more in and out and asking for a different parking site, which was not making sense. So I was like, instead of creating a banquet, I'm going to create a restaurant and it's going to be overflow for the restaurant from A to B.
So when you originally applied for this application, is it correct that the site that has an address of 3081 Route 27 was going to be involved in the operations?
That is correct.
And how is it going to be involved?
Just for the parking or the weekends that we were asking for, because most of the time, if you look in any Indian restaurant, because I've been in this industry for the last 20 years, that weekdays, not every restaurant is busy. It's only for the weekends when Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we need extra seating and extra parking.
So...
That was the reason to satisfy the board that, hey, I'm okay to rent a parking lot next door and I'll pay the rent just to make sure everyone is safe. Even I was trying to do valet service, but it didn't, the owner for that backed out.
Okay. So that, so now that the owner backed out and you don't have that parking available, is, is it, are you still planning to have these banquet events where you have valet parking and such?
No, it's just going to be a restaurant.
It's just going to be a restaurant? Okay. Please tell me about that restaurant.
It's going to be high Indian, fine dining restaurants, elevating the Indian cuisine.
Okay. And do you have, what will your hours of operation be?
It's going to be from 11 to 11.
Okay. And how many employees will you have?
I will have about 15.
15?
Yep.
Okay. Now, when we were out in the hallway, you were telling me something about the chefs that you have lined up. Could you share that with the board?
Oh, yeah. We have chefs that are renowned chefs from India and they have came on us, they came here, what is called, for the opening and stuff. They're going to be working here, making this restaurant to a different level. So the reason I was opening this restaurant, I already have a restaurant in Parisipani and different cities. So as an Indian-American, why do you go to New York City all the time? Spend money for what is called tolls, spend money for parking. So I was like, I'm going to bring New York City to Somerset County, which is in the center. And everyone want to have celebration to a nice decent restaurant and upscale Indian dining. So Somerset has wide variety of Indian-American living here. So I'm like, I'm going to open a restaurant here with a high-end Indian restaurant, basically.
Okay. So can you tell me what other uses exist on the same property that you are attended on?
It's going to be a medical dispensary and the other is empty. The other unit is empty.
Okay. So, and is it correct that you rent the, the space that the restaurant will operate in, are two units side by side?
Yes, exactly.
So you currently rent these two units side by side?
Yes, I do.
Are they already connected interior?
Yes, they are.
They're, all right. So they're already connected?
Because if you take a look at the plan, it shows right there, the entire 54 seats with the kitchen, with the bathrooms, is already approved. We are just looking for the 50 people that's next door. Let me see how much square footage. It's about like 1,500 square foot that we're asking for.
Okay. So God forbid that this application were not approved, what would happen to that space?
It's going to be a dead space.
It'd be dead space, unused.
Yes.
Okay. And just to reiterate one more time, initially with this application, you were involved in another site where people would park and potentially walk over or utilize a valet?
That's correct.
And now you're not proposing that?
Yep.
It's just going to be a restaurant?
Yep.
No big style banquet events?
No, it's not.
No confetti cannons?
No.
Okay.
Maybe in the opening, we're going to have that outside for the restaurant.
All right. But you'll clean it up if you do?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm going to get a big letter.
All right. I have no further questions for my fact witness unless the board does.
Any questions?
I have a question. I just want to clarify. So it's just going to be one restaurant?
Yes, exactly. It's going to be a one restaurant.
And the part, the restaurant B or the other section is just overflow seating? So there's, the kitchen would still?
Be the same, yeah, exactly.
Be the same? Everything would be the same?
Yes.
It's just additional seating?
Yeah. If you take a look at the plan, I don't know if you have that with you or not. Oh, I'm so sorry. If you look in the plan, the previous seating, bathrooms, and the kitchen is already approved. It's just I'm adding extra space to it. So can I come up there and show you or not?
I mean...
Okay. So if you take a look right here, I might use your pen real quick. So this entire thing is the only one that's not approved. Everything over here, kitchen, this, bathrooms, everything, office, everything is approved. So I'm just asking for this space. If I'm really busy out here, I can take, my customers right here.
Okay.
That's the only thing I'm asking for.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. Exactly where on Route 27 is this going to be located? Can you give me some kind of landmarks?
Yeah, it's right next to Spice Rack.
IHOP?
And the IHOP, if you know the, the I.
Over there. Oh, over there. Okay. So, so you're going to be behind the IHOP?
No, next to the IHOP. There's a empty vacant land and next to it, there is a new strip mall.
Just to the north of the IHOP? It's a brand new building.
I mean, IHOP and there's a vacant land in the middle. So it's divide the IHOP and the stuff. So it's not the same parking lot and stuff. It's totally different.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions?
I do have one. Will this witness or your traffic engineer talk about where that overflow parking is and how a pedestrian would get from point A to point B?
The overflow parking is no longer proposed.
Oh, it's a straight variance?
Right. The reason we spoke about the overflow is to indicate what changed about the application.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no problem at all.
And I'm a little confused too. You said there were going to be more businesses in that building? Or is this just going to be the restaurant?
No, it's restaurant, dispensary, and the last unit is empty. We don't know what's going to be there.
I'm assuming that the traffic engineer is going to speak to that because they, as part of their application, they calculated the parking requirements for the building as a whole. And that adds up to a certain amount. They're short of that, so that's the parking variance. So I'm sure their traffic engineer is going to explain the calculations and then provide testimony for you to consider as part, you know, as part of the parking variance.
Okay. Any others?
Your existing restaurant is 54, seating for 54.
That is correct.
And the new one will be for an additional 50.
That is correct.
And when you were proposing the banquet hall, it was an additional 100, right?
Yes.
So, so this is going to be only 50 just because of the way the seating is going to be arranged or?
No, the seating, at the same time, what is called, with the parking also, I can't fit 100, 200 people in the parking for 50, right? So I propose that, hey, I'm going to fit less people in the space and give them more space. I'm going to make the interior the way, hey, I have more space for my own storage, so I can just fit 50 people in there.
Okay. But here's, but here's the question.
Go ahead.
You've already shown a plan.
Okay.
Where in that exact same square footage, you can fit 100 seats. Now you've just taken out 50 of those seats, left a lot of open space on that same square footage. How is that possibly going to get enforced?
So I mean, what is called, the way we're going to do the interior and stuff, I'm going to have empty speeds, seats, and, I mean, empty spaces.
But you've already, in a way, you've already proven on the record through your floor plan prepared by your architect, that you can fit 100, 100 spaces, 100 seats in that space.
But that's no longer the proposal, Mr. Healy.
But you've, but all you've done is just taken tables out and now in that same exact square footage, now you're just saying, okay, now it's 50.
That's correct, because we're not allowed to have those tables based on the parking requirements.
And how is that possibly going to be enforced long-term?
Well, the same way that it would be enforced long-term, if you were to deny this application, we started seating people in there without approval. We, the...
How's that an answer?
I'll explain. Allow me to explain. The legality of my client seating an extra 100 people in that space is no different today than it would be under an approval. So you're asking, how would it be enforced if we approve this application? The same way you're enforcing it now.
So zoning staff will have to go there and count seats to make sure that there's no, no violation of this board's approval, if the board ends up approving it?
Essentially, yes. And I'll also submit that, that's, if you're concerned about a potential violation of your approval, really wouldn't be a grounds for a denial in this case, because as I've stated, that, that onus on the township to enforce its ordinance is there today, just like it'll be there under an approval.
Let's take it to an extreme now. Let's say you've done, I mean, you've already, in the exact same space, you've just taken half the seats out and are basically saying, okay, now we're good. Take it to the extreme. You would say the same thing if you took 80 of those seats out and it only proposed 20 seats. You'd go, oh, well, you can just enforce it. I mean, you've shown 50 seats in a much, in an area that could accommodate, and you've proven it can accommodate far more seats.
And this thing...
Why not provide the square footage that can provide 50?
Mr. Healy, this space already exists. My client is already in the space.
Because your client, because your client leased that space before getting an approval?
My client does have an approval for 54 seats and now is seeking approval for an additional 50 rather than an additional 100. And you're asking...
In the same square footage, that you could fit 100?
Correct. Right now, the approval is for 54 and we're seeking an approval for 104 as opposed to 154. So right now, in the space that fits 54, hypothetically, we could violate the existing approval and fit 154 people. And the township's responsibility to enforce the existing approval is the same as it would be to enforce an approval of 104.
Okay. I mean, I'll leave it to the board.
I don't, it's not my intention to confuse the board, but Mr. Healy's concerned that my client will get an approval and then commit a violation is not, is not any ground to turn down this parking variance. Because my client is already under a requirement to operate within the township's ordinance and is already under an requirement to operate within the existing approval, just like he'll be under a requirement to operate under any approval you might grant tonight.
Is there any reason why the floor plan couldn't be modified so that that dining area with the 50 seats is sized so that it could only accommodate 50 seats?
Well, it wouldn't be very nice for the patrons who have a lot of walking room and elbow room right now.
Well, your client had proposed to put twice that amount in the same square footage.
And is not doing that because it's not possible without a valet parking plan and people walking across parking lots, so he doesn't want to do that.
Yeah. Okay. So you're unwilling to consider modifying the site plan so that it actually accommodates the, so it's sized to fit 50 people?
Well, it would be an interior floor plan. It wouldn't even be a site plan.
Floor plan. If I said site plan, I meant floor plan.
Yeah, that's an arbitrary burden. That is an arbitrary burden. My client is not willing to unnecessarily reduce the size of its floor plan in order to, in order to prevent a hypothetical violation.
Okay. All right. I'll leave it to the board. So on the site plan, you're saying it's not a restaurant. I mean, it's not a catering facility or banquet hall, but you have a buffet counter and a juice counter. In my personal experience, that's what you see in a banquet facility. Can somebody explain that?
I have a restaurant right now and it's been there for the last 45 years. It's called Chan Palace and we have buffets every single day. And that's the restaurant known for buffet. So I'm not sure where you're getting this thing, just because there's a buffet and a juice counter, it cannot be a restaurant. Does it, does it show somewhere in the ordinance or is it...
Okay. Let's, why is it not in your regular restaurant? Your testimony was this is just for overflow. So why wouldn't you have the juice counter and the buffet counter in your restaurant space that you're going to be using all the time and not in the area that you're only going to use in the event of overflow?
Okay. So let me ask you.
No, no, no. I asked you a question. What's your answer? That's the way this works.
But Mr. Healy, I got to be honest. I'm not, I'm not objecting to your questions because I think it's valuable for the board to hear your position, but you're not a board member. You advise the board and provide your expert opinion and I think your expert opinion is...
Well, I can leave it to the board to ask, does the board want to hear an answer to that question?
Yes.
I agree. So answer the question.
Okay. So the reason we have the, what is called, the buffet tables and the juice table, because we might have two different things going on. Maybe I want to do this only for the à la carte and I want to do this for the buffet style. That doesn't mean I'm doing a catering or that doesn't mean I'm doing what is called sit-down dinner.
And none of that violates the ordinance either?
Exactly. I can have two types of things going at the same time, where you go to hibachi and sushi. So hibachi is different types of what is called stuff and sushi is the same thing. So it doesn't mean that I'm doing a party in there.
If I can add, just because of my knowledge of Indian restaurants, I probably go to too many of them, having buffets at an Indian restaurant is very common. A lot of Indian restaurants have that and...
And we don't live in ifs, if this is going to happen, sorry, if that will happen, if this XYZ. If we were living in ifs, you and me would not be here.
I understand, I understand that.
And you have to give me a chance to prove myself. You can't just accuse me, hey, I'm going to do this and this is going to happen. If I do something wrong, of course, I'm going to be penalized for that. But if I'm not doing anything wrong, again, it's if.
I have a question for you, Mark. So seating in general, how do you, how would you determine for a particular space or property, the capacity, the seating capacity?
Well, yeah, that's a good question. The seating capacity is ultimately determined by, I believe it'd be the fire code or construction code, and that's based on the square, the use and the square footage. So, you know, I can't answer, I mean, if they had an architect here, I'm sure the architect could answer what, you know, that per code, how many people would be allowed. So when you go into any use, whether it be a store or a restaurant, and there's that thing that says occupancy of no more than X, that comes from the construction department.
Okay.
So getting to the issue of, you know, again, I understand, I, we've all been in restaurants, we've all seen, you know, situations where, I mean, I've been in Indian restaurants and I've seen exactly that where there's a buffet. It's not, the question isn't why do you have it at all, but the question that I had was, why is it only in the overflow and not in the portion of the restaurant that, you know, used, that they said is part of their usual kind of seven days a week use? Why is it only in this overflow? And it also comes in the context of their original proposal for a banquet facility. So, and when you have, you know, a, a buffet counter and juice counter, again, we've all been to banquet halls, you normally associate those with that type of use.
Again, I...
It raises an obvious question.
I have, I have another fact witness who can explain these things, but again, we are not proposing a banquet hall. So if this board were, I just, I just want to put this out there. If this board is going to deny us because we might operate as a banquet hall, when I'm explicitly saying, and my client has explicitly said, we are not proposing to operate as a banquet hall. That's not fair to my client. So I do have another fact witness who can answer those questions. Why is there a juice bar? Why, why is there a buffet counter? So if you'll allow me to call that next witness, unless you have more questions for this witness.
Well, I think in order to answer those questions, in the context of the question was asked, why those uses are part of the overflow and not part of the main everyday restaurant? That's what seems to make the, you know, point out a possibility of a, of a different kind of separation. It's a question that I am also interested in. I would think that the part you're going to use seven days a week should have all the facilities contained within it.
And my next witness can answer those questions.
Well, if there are no other questions, bring that.
I have one. It's probably a little bit silly, but what's the difference between a banquet hall and a restaurant?
I'm happy you asked that. So in Franklin Township Municipal Code, Article 1, a banquet facility is designed as, this is in the land use portion of the code. A banquet facility is an establishment that provides food prepared and served in a formal setting for corporate events, conferences, or for special occasions such as weddings, bar mitzvahs, family reunions, charitable benefits, and other special events. That's right from the Franklin Township Municipal Code. Restaurants are not defined. Only banquet facilities are defined.
No, I understand the ordinance definition. I guess what I'm kind of getting at is with the new footprint that you provided and you're stating that it's very clearly a restaurant with no intention to be a banquet hall, what would be the internal programming difference aside from some tables? I mean, because you're saying corporate events. What's a corporate event? Me and four colleagues can go to lunch. That's a corporate event if someone throws down a corporate card.
Well, I would have to turn that question right back to the board. It's the board's jurisdiction to enforce its own, interpret and enforce its own ordinance.
Well, I also believe there is a profession called professional planning in which a more detailed and commonly accepted definition could be provided other than reading one detailed and commonly accepted definition could be provided other than reading one definition from our ordinance.
Maybe I can, maybe I can help. And again, this is just going from my own experience as somebody like, we've all gone to restaurants, and I think we've all gone to banquet facilities. I mean, I, a restaurant is when a small group, a family or a small group of people go together, sit down at a, at a, at a table, order food or provided food, they pay and they go, and the, and the, and the different tables in those restaurants are not necessarily there for one particular thing collectively. All of the different tables are occupied in a way separately. Whereas my, in my opinion, I think a banquet facility like that, somebody's renting the space for their, you know, for their exclusive use, whether it be corporate or a party or something like that, and then the facility is providing the food, whether it's a buffet or maybe there's a smaller menu that, that people choose from, they all kind of get there at the same time, they all kind of leave, and they're there again. If there's fifty, fifty seats, those fifty seats are in a way set aside for that particular group of people to use that room, and I'm assuming there's a charge for, you know, the, the leasing of that space for that amount of time.
So it's more about leasing of space as opposed to a large reservation?
I think that's a practical way to differentiate it, in my opinion.
Well, let me ask you one thing.
Well, before you start asking questions, in my experience, it's, it's typical that a banquet facility doesn't have a separate restaurant where I can just go and have, have a meal. A banquet facility, if you're not having an event, is, is basically closed. It's not the case?
Sorry, can you say that one more time?
Sure, a banquet facility doesn't provide for a family or a couple to go in and say, I just want to have dinner for two people. Isn't it typically the, the case where if you don't have an event going on in a banquet facility, you're not operating? You're, you're closed for that day?
That is correct.
Okay, I mean, that's basically the difference between a banquet facility and a restaurant. I can just go down the street and then go into the restaurant and say, I want to have dinner, but if it's a banquet facility, they're not going to have the doors open. It's going to be closed if there's not an event.
Yeah, but if you went to like Mangiano's, the Italian restaurant in Woodbridge, I mean, you can rent a space, but you can also still go in on date night and have.
But, but typically, I think that's the, the general difference between a banquet facility and, and a restaurant.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to, maybe I'm not doing a good job of getting at my, my point is, what would be stopping you other than your words saying that we're not going to rent the space because it may still have all the characteristics of that use?
Because it would be a violation of this approval.
Because we don't have, let me ask you, in the banquet, there's a dance floor. Do we have a dance floor?
Well, you can move tables. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I almost.
I mean, that's again, if, if.
Help you alleviate my concerns that Mark is bringing up, that's all.
I mean, as, just as an example, we just had a holiday party, right? So I rented the restaurant. That didn't make it a banquet, it's a restaurant.
Be the difference of renting a restaurant versus renting a banquet hall?
Because there's like not features, there's like.
What's what features is, that's what I'm getting at, because, I mean, I, if it's a restaurant, I mean, I'm all for it, small businesses, let's go. For the banquet, you're going to have a large amount of people show up at the exact same time, parking is an issue. But if, if you're saying rent, you, you can rent a restaurant out, but that doesn't mean it's a banquet hall, then what is a banquet hall?
Banquet hall is a place where hundreds of people get together and do what is called, whatever, like weddings and stuff.
A wedding could be less than hundreds of people.
I mean, again, if, if.
Not an Indian wedding.
We can talk about the difference between the two all we want to, but the issue that we started out with is that, that this application is looking for a parking variance, which is based on the occupied space. And since you have space for a hundred and fifty people, it isn't illogical to assume that over time you might actually grow into that space a little bit. And as Mr. Healy pointed out, enforcement could be a real problem. And by growing into that space, exacerbate the parking problem, which could be overwhelming since we're talking about going from a hundred to a hundred and fifty. That's, that's the, to me, that's the issue here. Why the reluctance to configure, reconfigure the, the space to where it accommodates a hundred people and not the hundred and fifty? And then we're giving you a variance if we approve it for parking based on a hundred people with a reasonable chance of enforcing it if the space isn't there for the other fifty people to occupy.
Mr. Chairman, we, my, my client did reconfigure the space. There, in, in the, in Mr. Healy's report, you'll see two floor plans side by side showing round tables fitting at least fifty more people. And that now we're showing rectangular tables fitting significantly less people, taking up the exact same space. And I do think it is possible for this town trip easily by looking at the site, seeing how many people are parking there, seeing if people are showing up at the same time, going into the restaurant if necessary to see, they do have round tables, they do, they do have a hundred and fifty-four people in here right now. This is a zoning violation. That, that, that would be how that would operate. That is how the enforcement would go. If you, if you saw a car full of people or a bus full of people showing up at this site all at once, that would be a zoning violation.
I, I have a question, and, you know, it's not about the use of the restaurant versus the banquet hall, because I think, been to lots of Indian restaurants that kind of function both, like there are restaurants, but you could have twenty-five people and show up, and I think you could do that at an American restaurant or at an Indian restaurant. At Indian restaurants, I think it tends to be more common, maybe, you know, like more, you know, more family events and stuff. But my question's really about, if it were a banquet hall with fifty people, not the hundred that you're opposed, then would the parking requirements be different than if it was just a restaurant? What if the, I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, well, they're, and I'm sure, again, their next experts, or New York, their traffic expert, I'm sure is going to speak to this. Their original application for the parking variance at first was higher, because for both the restaurant and the banquet facility, the parking requirement is one parking space for every three seats.
That's for.
So, so I'm sure what you're going to hear is that it's, now it's been lowered because the, the additional seats has been lowered from one hundred down to fifty.
But, but if the banquet hall originally just had fifty extra people and that kept the banquet hall but made it fifty, they changed the floor plan or changed their mind, would the parking requirements for a banquet hall be different than for a restaurant for the same number of people?
Well, again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak in a way as an expert. I'll just speak from my own personal experience going to restaurants versus catering halls. And I think we could also, you know, again, restaurants, there's turnover that, you know, one, you know, one table goes, next, new people come in, and there's more turnover on a, on a, on a regular basis, where a banquet facility, you know, usually, you know, the event starts at seven o'clock, eight o'clock, usually people are coming kind of all at once, the event ends at ten or eleven, everybody leaves. So I think there's, I think the timing perhaps, whether there's a difference in terms of banquet facility has more people, carpooling versus, you know, that I couldn't answer. But I just know, again, from my own personal experience, I think we all know.
To stand from a practical viewpoint.
That's, that's only the timing thing I can see being different.
That's what happens, I'm just curious, zoning viewpoint is.
From a zoning, from a zoning perspective, per our ordinance, the parking requirement is exactly the same. It's one, one space for every three seats.
Any other questions?
And Chairman, let me just speak real quick. I mean, I'm sorry, but it seems like every question we have, it gets turned back on the board and me. They are asking for a variance, they're asking for a parking variance. Anytime an applicant is asking for a variance, the board can consider appropriate mitigation, and I think a lot of these questions are going, going towards possible mitigation measures. The applicant needs to be, needs to be open to the possibility of some mitigation measure, measures, rather than challenging the board of why you, why you're questioning them.
Okay, next witness.
I, I, I would just briefly like to respond. I'm not trying to turn anything back on to the board. However, when we amended our application and sent it in a new revised plan, eliminating the involvement of a second site, a valet parking scheme, the possibility of patrons walking across multiple lots to get to our then-planned banquet facility, we removed that proposal. And then we received Mr. Healy's report talking about that we're still going to do that despite our amended proposal, that, that.
That's not true, that's not true. That comment three says your original submittal said you were going to do that. Your resumittal was silent on whether you're going to do that. You've since now testified that you're not, but your resumittal did not speak to that. So we're not going to take the comment, but first of all, it's not my report, it's reported to the technical review committee.
My apologies.
Your new submittal did not say we are no longer going to use that off-site site. It was silent. So we said, your original submittal said this, you didn't respond. What's the answer? You've since answered that question.
Okay, next witness.
Can you just get your name?
Hi, Charu Saxana, same last name.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Ms. Saxana, you, you came up here wanting to testify about the question about the juice counter and the buffet counter. What, what can you tell us about those?
Yes, so Mr. Healy raised concerns about why the floor plan changed so drastically. We were informed that we could not do the banquet space because we do not have the parking requirements. The parking lot that we originally were hoping for no longer exists, so we had to change our plan. We own a restaurant right now, it's been around for thirty years, like we mentioned. The restaurant runs solely on buffet. We have a full buffet counter, we have a full juice counter, and that's how our business runs. Mother's Day is our busiest day of the year. We have to use the banquet facility actually next door that also operates on their own because we have so much, we have so, like such a rush.
Where, where's this?
This is in Parsippany. The restaurant's Chan Palace, it's very well-known. And there's actually one in Piscataway as well. So the reason for this, the buffet and juice counter, if I want to do that on Mother's Day, then I would like to have the option to do that, and because I have so much more space now, as Mr. Healy keeps saying, I need to account for that space. And another thing I'd like to add is spacing, everyone has been in a banquet hall, has been to a, what do you call, a wedding, people are sitting very close together in round tables. At a restaurant, I like to go and I like to sit and have a little bit of space. I don't want to be on top of the person next to me, I want a little bit of space. So we accounted for that and different style seating on the other side.
And do you believe that would help for small private parties having private conversations as, as well, having more space between tables?
Yes, like, Richard? Okay, like you mentioned, if he's going for a date night and I want to sit on the side in the corner and not have the person right next to me, like John, sitting right here listening to my conversation, then yes, I would like to be, maybe asked to be seated on the other side. Our restaurant in Parsippany, perfect example, we have a little room, it's actually connected to the restaurant, exactly the same like this, and people ask to be seated there all the time because, one, COVID, people don't want to be too close to other people, people like to sit a little bit further apart, people don't want to be on top of the next person next to them, so we have these situations. And we've accounted for that in this new floor plan. We're, we've been living through this for the past, whatever, ten, fifteen years in our current restaurant, so we're making changes and we're going through that in our new floor plan. And this is based on past experience, I'm not just, you know, this is all things that we've experienced being restaurant owners.
I have no further questions for Ms. Saxana unless the board does.
Anything from the board?
The new floor plan, is that going to, are the, are the seats going to be maintained in that floor plan without, without moving them around at all? They're going to stay where they are?
I think that the, the way the tables are currently set up, they're all square tables that are set like this, I may change some of them to like rectangle tables or something along those lines, but we're not going, if you're asking if we're going to have like round tables or something like that, that would accommodate a banquet, then no.
Actually, what I'm asking a question about is whether or not if we were to approve this request, that we could include the revised floor plan in there to say, this is where all the seats are going to be located, this is the number of seats that are in there. I think that would make it easier for enforcement if they could go in with the floor plan and say, this is not, the seats are no longer in the places that they were when this was approved, you've got a violation.
Sure, so I have two responses to that. One, this, the way these tables are set up, I do not want to promise to the board that this is exactly how my table is going to be set up. If I'm running the restaurant and I need to change things around a little bit, if I need to turn the tables from vertical to horizontal, I don't want this to be the footprint that the board is looking at, and them come and be like, okay, no, the tables are not set up the way they should be. So I don't think that that's realistic, especially having, say, for example, larger parties that come, if I have twelve people come instead of two people, the arrangements are going to be different. So I don't think that that is realistic.
Yeah, that's one. You said two.
Let me answer that real quick. I, I think ultimately if the board does approve, I think if altogether, if the, the seating between the two spaces was no more than a hundred and four, because ultimately, again, that's what's going to dictate the parking requirement, whether they're circular, rectangular, or whatever.
Right, and my other, my second point was going to be that we were looking, we're looking at occupancy, not necessarily the shape of the tables, which Mr. Healy just also clarified.
Okay.
Any other questions? Next.
Do you swear or affirm any testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Introduce yourself for the record.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
And does the board accept my expert witness as an expert?
She's been here too many times for us not to accept her.
My license is still in good standing.
What do you have to share with us tonight, Ms. Dolan?
Well, I've got parking calculations based on what is the current proposal, which is one hundred and four fine dining restaurant seats. I had issued a report on the original application, as we've been talking about for the past half hour or so, but I'm going to focus tonight on my October twenty-three, twenty-two-three letter that summarizes the parking calculations and the building. Before I get into the parking, I just want to note, because there was some commentary about it at the onset of this application tonight, the building is a newer building on Route twenty-seven. It had been approved a few years ago, and we actually were not the traffic engineer on that application, but the property owner, who I believe has tried to put a liquor store into this building, hired us because the liquor store triggered the need for a new access permit from NJDOT. So our office obtained a shopping center access permit from DOT, whereas the original DOT permit was for fewer trips associated with a specialty retail center. The permit that our office obtained a year and a half or two years ago allows any tenants in this building. So whether it's restaurant, banquet, dispensary, liquor store, arts and crafts store, whatever the different tenant mix that may end up in this building, will not require us to go back to NJDOT. We've permitted, re-permitted the driveway to account for higher generating uses, and if the board requires any of that in writing, I, I have it in my, in my file from the, the other applicant that I worked for, I believe he went under KV Liquors. So with that, we are exempt from DOT permitting, the driveway's built, the building is built, and we have seventy-five parking spaces on site. The building is just under, just over fifteen thousand square feet, and we've talked about the three tenant spaces. The applicant before you tonight with about fifty-five hundred square feet for restaurant space. The dispensary is the other use, and then the vacant space is where the liquor store was intended to go, and I know that that has a zoning implication. I'm not familiar with where that is, but it's currently vacant. So fifteen thousand thirty-nine square feet is the total building. The restaurant space that's before you tonight is fifty-five twenty-five square feet, leaving nine thousand and change, nine thousand five hundred fourteen square feet of generic retail space. So per your ordinance, as we discussed a little bit a few minutes ago, the restaurant requires eighty-three parking, I'm, I'm sorry, the restaurant is proposing a hundred and four spaces. That requires thirty-five parking spaces, a hundred and four seats divided by three spaces per seat, thirty-five restaurant spaces. The balance of the building would be classified as retail, and your ordinance requires one space for every two hundred square feet, so that's forty-eight. Therefore, the total requirement, when we, when we take out the restaurant space, is eighty-three. There are seventy-five spaces on site, so we've got an eight-space variance. If you were to look at the seventy-five spaces that are on the site, and then you take away the forty-eight that are required for retail, that would leave twenty-seven available for the restaurant, which would equate to eighty-one seats. So eighty-one seats would be permitted, no parking variance, we're at a hundred and four. So the surplus is what we're looking to defend before the board, and to do that, I went to the Institute of Transportation Engineers' latest publication of the Parking Generation Manual, sixth edition was recently issued, and that has parking demand ratios and also time of day parking demands for different land uses. As I said, your ordinance requires about five spaces per thousand, one per two hundred square feet, which is pretty high because now that we've got all of this e-commerce and people are getting, you know, deliveries via Amazon and so forth, the retail parking demands have come down from five per thousand to more like three per thousand. So there's a little bit of play in the variance request because the parking demands for generic retail aren't as high as they used to be. If you were to look at the dispensary based on, and, and now it's Colorado and New Jersey are the sources for the ITE dispensary data, we'll be looking at about twenty to twenty-four spaces. But the dispensary has peak parking demands earlier in the day, midday into the four and five o'clock hour. Fine dining is peaking at six to nine PM. So there's an offset. When the restaurant is busiest, you're going to have a lower parking demand for the dispensary. If you were to look at the liquor store in the, in the vacant space, that too would have a different peaking characteristic midday to later in the afternoon. So there's a slight offset, which is why the Institute of Transportation Engineers says you don't necessarily take each tenant and look at their individual parking needs because they don't all have peak parking demands at the same time. So if you look at those two, two different points, one, that the retail demand overall has, has gone down over time, and two, the three tenant spaces aren't likely to be demanding a hundred percent of their parking at the same time. I think that the eight-space variance can be granted, that would be for twenty-three or twenty-four, the additional seat. That would be for 23 or 24, the additional seats that we're looking for. So I think that that's a lot of numbers and a lot of math, but again, based on the latest ITE data, and, and, you know, we go out and we study some of these sites too, definitely retail parking is down. This report that I'm talking about, the letter report from October 2023 from our office, was an update to the original study that looked at the banquet demand, and at that 154 spaces, there's no question, we would have more of a variance and we would have to look at off-site parking. As you heard from the witness before me, the witnesses before me, the off-site parking is no longer available. That meant they had to modify their development application. I can't speak to table layouts, but I can speak to the parking, and I think that the parking variance is modest, and for the use that's before you tonight, I believe that approval can be granted without any negative consequences.
Any questions?
Oh, I got a couple. Number one, I now know what building they're in.
Oh, good.
And the, and the, the dispensary that you keep talking about, I thought it was like a medical dispensary, but it's not. It's a marijuana dispensary, isn't it?
It is. I believe it was approved as medical, and they're waiting for their recreational license.
Okay. Now, I've driven by that building a billion times, and I always wonder where the parking is. It is in back of the building?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so they've got a, they've got, I've sort of been out of circulation here. They've got a regular parking lot behind the building, and they have, they have, they have a shortfall in the, in the parking. Well, at least initially, it won't be a problem because there's nobody in that other, that other unit.
That's true, too.
Okay. Now, the next question is, how did they figure, how did they figure out what is the peak use of parking for the, the dispensary? Where'd that number come from?
You're talking about the ITE numbers that I'm talking about?
ITE, what does that mean?
I'm sorry, the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Yes, those numbers, right.
Right, so since it's a relatively new land use, starting in Colorado, traffic engineers out in Colorado were monitoring the driveway activity and parking demands, submitted that to the ITE. The sixth edition of the Parking Generation Manual was just released, and that includes some New Jersey sites as well. I didn't study any of those. We've done a couple, our office has, mostly for trip generation, but the numbers that talk to how many spaces and at what time of day, those come from the Parking Generation Manual by the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Okay, those are all good answers to my series of questions that I had when the light went on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to provide the board a little bit of background, so that site was approved as a retail facility. It's, the 75 spaces was based on the square footage of the building, divided by the parking requirement for retail. You know, a restaurant is, is a permitted use, but when you put a retail, I mean, a restaurant in that space and divide it by, you know, one space for every three seats, the parking requirement goes up compared to the same amount of square footage for retail. So that, that's why they're here.
So they're, they're under, I'm sorry, they're under eight spaces, in other words?
Yes, based on the seating we're talking about tonight. Correct.
Any other questions?
Hours, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just want to clarify, so, but based on the different peak times of the different types of businesses, that shortfall is, you're thinking it's not a big impact because they're at different times, is that?
That's correct. You know, if this were a, more of like a diner, deli, something that was driving a lunchtime business as opposed to a higher dinner weekend demand, might be a different type of analysis. But based on the known tenant that we have, the dispensary, and the type of restaurant that's proposed, eight spaces to me is, is not going to be a problem because of the demand ratios and the different peaking characteristics of the different uses at the center.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, my question was kind of related. So the, are there hours for the dispensary that it's going to be open?
I don't know.
That would be just really up to the retail.
Up to the retailer. I mean, it was, it's a permitted use, so they were, they didn't have to go before any board. They were, received necessary permits to occupy the space, but there wouldn't be any conditions on the hours of operation.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. You, you had mentioned that the dispensary was medical, and it got licensure to be recreational.
I think they're waiting on that license.
Sure, just for my own clarification, does that change the, the parking if it's recreational?
No, and, and the numbers that I've been speaking to from the Institute of Transportation Engineers are based on recreational. Yeah.
So a bit more conservative to begin with.
Right.
And then secondly, you were comparing, it's always hard to talk traffic, comparing the, the peak parking rates for the various uses. In your opinion, like how, like what percentage of occupancy would you expect the parking lot to be at its worst?
So, so if the, if the restaurant were doing gangbusters for a Christmas or holiday party, and it was a Friday night, if, if, if everything was, you know, that, that might be, you know, when it's busiest, but because of the type of restaurant, being more of a fine dining, I think you're probably going to see somewhere in the, I would say up to 80% maybe occupancy at a worst case.
And just the reason I ask is there's no additional consideration for off-site parking anymore, which, which is fine. So if someone does go there and there is no parking, then they're kind of, you know, in trouble. So I just kind of wonder what your opinion was in terms of the, the occupancy rate of the parking?
Right, I, I, I think that, that, again, the ordinance is somewhat conservative because that was always the number, five per thousand, then it was four per thousand, now it's closer to three per thousand. So I think that in and of itself, and if it were, you know, I think that the parking demands for a liquor store, which was, as my understanding, was the initial tenant that was hopeful to be in there, that, I calculated to be at about 12 on a busiest hour. So that parking demand isn't quite as high as you might see for the dispensary, and, and that probably has to do with the newness of the dispensary business, particularly in New Jersey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others?
Did you look at the handicap situation, Bessie?
I didn't. I think that was part of the original approval, so I think there, there must be two or three spaces out there, but I don't, I don't know. I didn't look at that.
Any others?
Two questions. So you talked about the, the DOT permit being modified. The restaurant's not a high-traffic generator, or I should ask in the form of a question, is the restaurant considered a high-traffic generator by DOT?
No, and, and what happened was the original permit was issued for specialty retail, which is defined as lower generating uses. DOT in the Access Code specifies the different uses that are excluded from the specialty retail, and when we went back and got the generic shopping center approval, that, that incorporates anything except for like a morning generator, if, if you were to throw a Dunkin' or a Starbucks in there, that, we would have to look at the numbers, but otherwise, this type of restaurant is completely permitted by DOT and the Access Code as the shopping center classification.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, the original approval where it was supposed to be specialty retail, would the restaurant, as proposed, fall under that category?
You know, the, the fine dining category might because it's a lower generator than, say, you know, fast food or pizza or deli, and, and, and in fact, I think deli is one of the exclusions in specialty retail. So I don't know if fine dining would be excluded, but I know that now that we've re-permitted, any restaurant is allowed.
Okay, so, I mean, you're here before this board for this restaurant, so I think that point becomes moot as far as this restaurant, but the original approval before the board, there was testimony about this whole issue and about how the site was specifically limited to specialty retail. So the board, the planning board's approval of the site plan approval for this site, piggybacks on that. Again, the, the testimony that was provided by that traffic engineer, that that site was only, this site was only going to be specialty retail. So even though you may have gotten the okay from the DOT, you may have an issue with zoning because our approval is still for specialty retail.
Okay, that I wasn't aware of. I, I got involved with the liquor store in particular, trying to get a letter of no interest from DOT stating that the approval granted by DOT covered liquor store, because that's not specified in the Access Code, and DOT came back and said, if you want a liquor store in there, you need to re-permit this as a shopping center.
The testimony was essentially kind of, you know, this parking lot works, it's specialty retail, it's not going to be a Dunkin' Donuts, it's not going to be this, we're already limited by our DOT approval, so everything's going to be okay, board, you can approve this site plan. So that's why the resolution of the planning board approval, again, so if you're, you might want to let your client know that if they do get some other higher traffic, whatever falls under that new category, they may still need to go back to the planning board to amend their approval.
Understood, and just with respect to, you did mention the parking, the parking supply is based on the ordinance requirement for the building area, the one per 200. So I understand the DOT aspect of it, but the parking was based on the, the ordinance requirement.
Okay, and then one question. So you had mentioned the, the, the difference in, you know, the retail, and particularly the cannabis is going to have a higher peak during the day. This is fine dining, so it'd be more likely during the evening. That's during the weekday. What about on the weekend?
Oh, yeah, on the weekend, I, I looked at those numbers too. Cannabis dispensary is peaking, wait, I think I wrote it down here, 12 to 2 on Saturday, whereas the fine dining is 7 to 10 on Saturday, and that's like 90 to 100% of each of the uses. So they are offset. You're welcome.
Any others? Hey, what's next?
We have no further witnesses.
Okay, we're open to the public. If there's anyone who wants to make a comment or ask a question, now's the time to do it. Like, there are no takers, so we'll close.
I'll, I'll just, you know, I, I think this was a very thorough presentation and questioning by, by the board and its professionals. Obviously, we're here for the proposed expansion of the restaurant by 50 occupants, and we're seeking a parking variance. The only relief we're seeking is for those, that variance of eight parking spaces. You heard the testimony of our traffic engineer indicating that this will work with the other uses on the site. You heard the testimony of the operators of the restaurant, how they're going to operate the restaurant, it's going to be a high-end Indian restaurant, why they want the, this space in there, you know, for, for privacy for, for their patrons, and then also you heard the testimony about their intention not to use this as a banquet facility, not to have that valet parking scheme, not to have patrons walking across multiple lots to get to their site. It's just going to be a typical Indian restaurant, or not typical, it's going to be a high-end, very spectacular Indian restaurant that everybody should enjoy when it, when it is open and operating, and that, that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, any board discussion?
I'm all discussed out.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I move that we grant Anders Caterers a, this is the part, an application to increase the occupancy of their restaurant from 50 people to 104 people, and grant them the variance to operate with less than, with seven parking spaces less than are required by the ordinance. Eight that are required by the ordinance.
Can I ask, the applicant has made, has testified to certain things. I mean, they've said they're not a regular restaurant that may, for example, have a high amount of lunchtime traffic. They're a high-end restaurant. Do you want to specify that? Do you want to have some language in there that basically says, that addresses the fact that is, again, addressing their own testimony to you, this is a restaurant and not a banquet facility? And I know we talked a lot, you know, Rich had some questions about that. So do you want to put some things in the resolution that addresses how this is going to be a restaurant and not a banquet facility?
I feel comfortable with the, with the resolution I've proposed, but I would be happy to accept any amendments offered by my fellow board members.
I think we should add that the use is not for a banquet, since that, the original application said so. So we should say that. You mentioned about the occupancy. I think that's important.
That's the key, yes.
Yes, and the, the fact that it's a high-end restaurant, I think that impacts the, the parking or the, what the rates are. So I think that's important to, to mention that description of the use of that space.
I think it's also important that we, that, now that I think about it, that we indicate that the, not only is the total occupancy limited to 104, but the, the second room of the restaurant is limited to 50 seats, because that's where we want to do accounting. And I'm sorry that we did this in a kind of a piecemeal way, but...
Everybody understand, then we're looking for a second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
No further discussion, whole board.
Cheryl Lithia? Yes. Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
No, I don't feel they have proven their case, so no.
Gary Rosenthal?
I'll void. Yes, with the understanding that they've heard all of our conditions about the 104, about the high end, and, and as long as that is understood, I will vote yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes, good luck with the restaurant.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And good luck. Next is Muslim Foundation, ZBA 2300017. Hill Mary Final Site Plan, the D1 Use variance, in which the applicant seeks to make certain modifications to the area recently added to the site plan at 45, at 47 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, Block 4, 68.09, Lot 37.02, in the R40 Zone, carried from November 2nd with no further notification.
Good evening, chairman and board members. My name is John DeLuca. You're stuck with me. I'm here tonight again representing Muslim Foundation Incorporated. We are here seeking a preliminary and final site plan approval with a, it's actually a D3 variance we are seeking. This property was allowed to operate under a conditional use in the, in the zone, and, I'm sorry, anyway, it's, it's allowed to operate, I believe it's in the R10 zone, if I'm not mistaken, R40, my apologies, it's in the R40 zone, and it is, it is under a, a conditional use, and we are seeking to deviate from some of those conditions, and for that reason, that's why this is a D3 variance we are seeking. Essentially, the proposal is to clear out some newly acquired space on a lot that's been consolidated with our lot for recreational purposes, and the conditions that we're seeking to deviate from are some buffering requirements, and my one witness, my engineer and planner, Mr. William Chapin, will describe the exact proposal and why we feel those deviations are appropriate and necessary for this recreation area. Well, let me just give him a moment to set up, and I actually have an exhibit that I want to pass out to the board so we can probably help with his testimony a little bit. I believe it was the... I, I believe it was the, uh, a tree removal plan.
Is that exhibit additional to what was already submitted?
Yes. So if we could, uh, mark this exhibit as A1. Uh, this is a, a tree removal plan, uh, prepared by, by Van Cleef Engineering. Their date on it? Uh, it's dated November 11th, 2023.
But just, so just so the board understands the overall context. So TRC and Environmental Commission had a number of comments on the original submittal, and this is basically your response to that? And you're providing that, can explain that to the board? So, well, the answer wasn't picked up, but the answer was yes, that's intent. Okay.
Was he sworn in?
No, no, he was not sworn in, yeah.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth? Okay. And again, just for the record, if you can give your name, spell your last name and your company?
William Chapin. C-H-A-P-I-N.
Will the board accept Mr. Chapin in the field of engineering and professional planning?
Did... What company qualifications, anything?
Would you give the board the benefit of your credentials?
Let's see. Currently work, currently employed by Van Cleef Engineering, where I've been for two years. I've got about, over 40 years of experience in practice of civil engineering.
You didn't say a company, that's all.
Okay.
And your license is currently active, is correct?
Mr. Chapin, what can you, um, tell us about, uh, our proposal and, and the deviations from that, uh, conditional use?
Okay. The, um, yes, we originally had submitted plans without any buffer, and there was, um, very little information regarding what was on the site. And it was obviously some, well, the TRC was saying like, hey, this could be anything in so many words. So in the meantime, we had sent our field crews out to locate the trees that are out there, our landscape architect identified them. Here, this plan, which you can see, what you're looking at is the overall total trees that are on the site. The ones in gray are those that were determined to be either dead or diseased. And by and large, those are ash trees that have all been, you know, basically killed off by the emerald borer. Can you hear me? Okay, it is working. I just, okay. Uh, so anyway, the, the plan is showing what is being removed. If it's not, if it's not grayed out, that's to be retained. Uh, we have another drawing that follows this one up, which shows the retained trees along with what we're proposing for a buffer. And that buffer is on the, I guess it's kind of like the northeast side there. That buffer is going to be supplemented by the, uh, trees that are there. There's a lot of cedar there. So we're not, so instead of just running down that side with just a, you know, 20-foot or wide buffer or so, we're, we're breaking it up a little because of the trees that are already there. Change to that, so. And this is the plan showing the trees that are main and the trees that are proposed and around the buffer, around the two sides on the east. But there's like 56, um, conifers planted from the list, three out, three trees out of the list of the five that the township recommends. There are also, I forgot the exact number, 40 something, 46 or so, uh, shrubs that are going, being intermixed around there. In some cases, it's to fill spaces below, you know, existing trees where you can see below the lower branches. And this, part of the idea is too, is that some of those shrubs will be, provide some food and whatnot for the wildlife. And, let's see, I guess the...
If you, if you could just, uh, describe to the board, um, what buffer i- is required and how are we deviating from it?
Okay, the buffer... The ordinance says that you're asking for a buffer of either 15 feet or 25 feet wide and with a fence. And they do say, well, I forget, it says they can't take advantage of, you know, trees that are already there, which is what we're doing. But in this case, we're, we're providing a 15-foot buffer. And the fence that's going in is not a solid fence. So that's, I guess, one of the things we're going to need a variance for. And that, that is tied into the fence that is being funded by the federal government for safety, purity.
Okay. And what does this surround?
Excuse me. Can you indicate that on the computer as you speak about it so we can follow easier?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so where, where would the fence, uh, be located using your cursor? Just...
Yeah, the fence would be running along, I guess, the northwest, northeast, southeast sides of the, of this portion of the property. And, uh, on the, on the southeast side, we're pretty much pat, filling that with trees without really relying that much on the few trees that are there. And whereas on the upper side, we've got these areas that are fairly dense with, uh, cedar trees. So we're providing a little less buffering in that there's already an effective buffer there.
And, um, what are the, what are the surrounding uses to this site?
Okay, on the northwest side over here, it's, uh, it is, um, all office and that kind of thing. On the north, northwest, that's where the, um, multifamily residential is currently under construction. And to the southeast over here, that is basically the wooded back portion of the house that's out on, uh, Cedar Grove Lane, from which this property had been acquired.
And what uses exist on our site?
Uh, we've got the, uh, the mosque, the school, and the daycare.
And do we propose any, uh, construction on, on this area that we're looking at?
No, we are not.
Okay. What, and can you tell us a little bit about what the, what use is proposed in this area?
It's pretty much supposed to be used for, um, general recreation, nothing formal, no fields laid out, no, um, whatever, goalposts or any of that kind of thing put in there. It'll be pretty much wide open. It will be mowed. So if they wanted to have, you know, something like where you go out, you have the four bases and you throw them down in an approximate diamond and you decide to play kickball or, you know, softball or something, they might do something like that, but that's not a permanent thing. You'd pick up the bases and go home.
Uh, do you imagine this use impacting any of the surrounding uses?
No, no. I mean, it's, it's pretty much an open, most of the time it'll be an open field. Maybe at certain times there'll be children and their, you know, teachers perhaps out there. But for, you know, but no, no formal kind of competitions or organized groups of people. It'd just be, you know, the local schoolchildren.
Okay. And, um, would this fall under, uh, be, because it is intended to be used for schoolchildren, uh, is that considered inherently beneficial use?
I would say so, yes.
Thank you. Um, and, and just, just to clarify, so we're, we're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and the variance, um, only as to the buffer. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, I, I have no further questions, uh, from Mr. Chapin unless the board has any further questions.
I don't know if they, you could answer this, but is there any projected use once the site is functioning? As you mentioned, it's, it's going to, of using amplified sound or playing loud music or outdoor affairs?
I, I, I can say that's not the intention. I do have a, a fact witness, if the board would like to hear a little bit more about how, how exactly this space will be used.
I'm interested in the sound because it is next to 60 townhouses.
Good evening. Please introduce yourself to the board.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Afthar Hussain, and I'm one of the director of Muslim Foundation.
Do you swear or affirm any testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So, Mr. Hussain, how, how exactly will this space be used? And please address, uh, Chairman Thomas's question regarding amplified sound.
Yes, so it will be used by the children to play and also to teach them about gardening. You know, we're not doing anything else at this time.
There's no plan to use, uh, use this area for, um, like parties or summer camps?
No.
No. Okay. And you don't, you don't imagine, uh, that, uh, children playing and gardening would require maybe a microphone and an amplifier with a big speaker, nothing like that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it, I, I think it might help if I give the board just a little bit of the context of how, again, why they're here, um, and a little bit of the history. So the area that you're seeing there, that, that square, um, that was not originally part of their site. Um, they went to the planning board a year or two ago, uh, for subdivision approval. Um, they basically acquired the rear portion of their neighbor's property. Um, at that point, they did not have any plans for the use of that site. And the condition of the board's approval was basically, well, before you do anything to that area, you need to get necessary approvals. Um, so that's part of why, the reason why they're here. Um, now, that site or that, now that square area is part of the, I'm going to call it a campus of the place of worship and the school. The conditional use standards, um, that apply to those uses require these buffers that we're talking about. So the use, as, has been testified, is that it's going to be essentially informal play, uh, informal play area that does technically need this either 15 or 20-foot wide buffer with evergreens and fencing. It has to go, and it's, it's where the, where the site abuts residential properties. So, um, I'm assuming nor, north is, let's assume north is plan left. Uh, so on the southerly side, they have a buffer. On the east, they have, I guess, a combination of proposed trees and existing trees to remain. Plan north, they're not proposing a buffer, but that abjoints the BI zone. So there's no buffer required per the ordinance. They're required along those two property lines. So that's why they're before you for, you know, site plan approval, because they are modifying the site to the degree that they're changing this area, um, to make it into informal play. And they don't technically fully comply with the, uh, conditional use standards for the buffering. And, you know, part of that, when they, when an applicant is applying for, um, a, um, a conditional use variance, they basically need to prove to you that the, that the, what they're proposing is, is consistent with the intent of the ordinance. And I would think, I would suggest that part of that is what's the intended use of that space? You know, if, if it was going to be a building with a parking lot and other activity, you may look at as far as the need for buffering to one level versus an area that's going to be for informal play. Um, so anyway, I, I think hopefully that helped give a little bit of context to why they're here. Um, I'm a little unclear, just a few questions. I'm a little unclear of where the fence is proposed. And also what, we, we've heard it's not solid. What is it? And how tall is it? So what, what is, is it around the entirety of that area?
Yes, and around the three sides of this portion and then the rest of the property. We're out on the front side, there's going to be a couple gates set, you know, significantly back from the, the road, but an, a fence going across there so that it will be, you know, kind of a compound. It'll...
So the whole, the whole site is going to be enclosed, and that's for security purposes?
That's, yes.
Okay. And what is the, so if it's, the, the ordinance requires a solid fence, you're, this is not going to be a solid fence, what is it going to be?
Supposed to be an iron fence, you know, with, kind of four-inch spacing for the vertical bars kind of thing.
And how tall is it?
Six feet.
Six. Okay. And then, you have this plan that's projected, what was handed out is actually slightly different. Um, so I guess my question is, I, I can see on this that usual way that plans are drawn, the darker, um, trees, if you will, those circles and, you know, the circles are probably deciduous trees and the things that look like stars are probably evergreen trees. Um, and the thing, the, the, the ones that are darker are proposed, the ones that are lighter presumably are, are, are existing. So I guess I ask for you to confirm that since it's your plan.
You've got it right.
Okay. And then you, to the degree that you, this plan is showing existing trees, is this showing all the trees that exist or all the, and/or all the trees that are going to stay?
The trees that exist that are going to stay. The other plan shows all the trees that exist.
Okay. So when you look at this, I do see the trees that are grayed out so that they're not on here because they're proposed to be removed because they're dead or dying.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
A question, um, this is full of questions tonight, I'm sorry. Um, is there any proposed grading on the site?
No. Are you, there's no grounds, uh, there's no, you know, removal of, you know, grass or surface con, condition. They're talking about putting, um, seeding the, the property, but they will not be clearing it, they will not be, you know, raking it off or, you know, no dirt exposure.
So you, there's no stormwater management here because you're not changing the ground cover?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it may help just to, um, uh, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through, so the TRC reviewed the prior plans. So the TRC didn't have a, did not review this. So what I'm going to suggest is, I'm, I'm going to go through the TRC report. I think some of, a lot of these comments have now been addressed, at least verbally in their testimony. But just to make sure kind of everything gets covered, I'm going to kind of as quickly as possible go through the TRC report. And at least I'll offer you my opinion whether the applicant has addressed them or not. So going on to page three, where really the bulk of the comments start, that first bullet, um, again, I think you've answered it. You know, at that point, we didn't know what the applicant's intentions for that area was. Um, the applicant has now, um, provided that clarification. They've indicated there's no formal playing fields, et cetera. Um, second bullet, um, the applicant has clarified, the, originally, basically, they were proposing to remove all of the trees on the site. Now they're essentially going to keep the majority except those that are dead or dying as indicated on these plans. The third bullet, uh, talks about buffering. Again, the original plan didn't propose any buffering. Um, now, actually, this leads to a question then. So since, again, since we didn't get a chance to review this, the ordinance talks about the size of, I think it's a six to eight feet, evergreens. I guess my question is, the ordinance requires a certain size. These comply with the ordinance, is that correct? Or, or if not, you will comply?
Yeah, if not, they will comply. To my knowledge that they, they do comply, but I'll...
And you, bottom line, I, we haven't heard anything saying that you're asking... And you, bottom line, we haven't heard anything saying that you're asking for relief from that.
That's correct.
Okay. The last bullet, we mentioned that a buffer is required along the southerly property line. And again, you can see through the testimony and on that plan, they're proposing to double, double staggered row of, of, of trees. Okay, so this hasn't been addressed. The, on the original plan, there was another, there's another area where you had aerial lights. Can you address that? Because they're, part of it, part of the question was, from the TRC, was why are you proposing aerial lights? Essentially what looked like kind of parking lot lights, fifteen foot high lights. Why are you proposing that on kind of a grass area? And there was also some, the ordinance says you can't have any lighting go over the property line. And because the light poles are basically on the property line, you exceed the ordinance. So can you address that?
My understanding is that it's a matter of safety. What happens, it's been mentioned that, especially this time of year today, we noticed that it gets dark really early. So they have students that will be leaving the building in the dark. That's a grassed area that we're talking about. And the idea is that it's going to remain grass, it will not be parking, it will not be overflow, but it is supposed to be well lit to keep an eye on the children. Effectively a safety issue.
And so just to point the board, so we know, so you know the area that we're talking about, on page six of the TRC report is the original plan. So you'll see in the lower left-hand corner of the site, it says, proposed pole mount lighting fixtures, one, two, three, four.
Right in here.
Five, it looks like there's maybe five or six lights.
Yeah. Yeah, six lights. Right, there's one.
So it's currently a, a grass area, is that correct?
Yeah, yes. You know, there's that, by the school, there's a parking lot there and then between that in the, in that corner. Okay, okay, so I'm just informed that there's actually a playground there, so.
Okay, is that, that, is that that rectangle behind the building?
I think this is above and beyond that. Yeah, okay, it is, it is above and beyond the one at the end of the building.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what above and beyond means. What, what does that mean?
In addition to.
So the lighting is addition, so it lights more of an area than just a playground? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry, I'm not, I, I just don't understand the answer.
Well, how about, what was the question again?
The, the question is, you know, again, on that, on that, on that original site plan, in that lower left-hand corner, the site plan is proposing six, essentially, again, I'm calling them parking area lights because when you see a light attached to a, on a fifteen foot high pole. And it's just, it's unusual to.
It is.
Have lights like that in an area that's not a parking lot. And, and because of their location, essentially on the property line, it's, it's actually a variance. So, so then the question is, why are you proposing it?
So I, I think that Mr. Hussain might be able to specify exactly where that playground exists. Mr. Hussain, you're, you're, right now you're looking at page six of the TRC report that Mr. Healy directed the board to look at. Is it correct that, that the playground is in, is located?
It is somewhere here.
Be, so, so beyond, beyond the parking lot?
Yeah.
Just to the, the northwest of, of the parking lot?
It's not, yeah, it's not on there. It's, it's.
So, so, so if you're looking at, if you're looking at page six of the TRC report, the, the playground is located in the bottom left corner of that map?
Yes. Okay, then can somebody then, and perhaps you can reference aerial photographs on page five and six of the TRC report. Again, the, the foot candles, which is the level of lighting, the plan shows one point seven foot candles beyond the property line, where the ordinance says you can't have more than zero. Can you provide some justification to the board? And again, I'm kind of, you may want to reference the aerial photographs on page five and six.
Okay, because I've got on the, the screen there, that's showing the lit, lit area. And I'm noticing there's one light in the corner and that's at an angle to everything else, and that's causing the light spillage onto two adjacent properties. So I'm thinking perhaps if that one was removed, we may be most of the way towards eliminating any problem with spillage.
Okay, I mean, again, Mr. DeLuca, I would suggest you look at the aerial photograph on page five and six. And the forested nature of the adjoining properties, you might want to.
Yeah, so what?
Impacts to those adjoining properties?
What are the uses on those properties and, and what are the conditions you're going to be lighting up?
Okay, so one of the, the, one side is the light and, or do you call them office spaces? And on the other side, it's the back end of, it looks like a piece of property that is a combination, perhaps residential and business, and it's a wooded end of the property.
There's no, I mean, that looks like it's a, that's a very deep property.
Yeah.
With, actually, I think, is that? Yeah, I think it's a residential, it's not a place of worship. But nonetheless, the, the developed portion of the property is in the first front portion with the back being unused and forested.
Correct.
Would you opine that therefore there's really no impact to that neighbor because it's just?
That works for me, yes.
Lighting is spilling over into a forested portion of the rear right corner of their property?
Yeah, that seems to be, that's the way I would see it, yes.
Okay, so, I don't know if the board has any questions beyond that on that issue.
Are there house side shields on these fixtures?
I believe they're supposed to be, we'll have to, I'd have to check.
Yeah, we could just make that a condition and then, you know, to Mark's point, if there's a little bit of spillage.
That would certainly be a reasonable thing.
Because you do have buffer on your property on that side, and I would assume that would kind of eliminate actual trespass?
Yes.
And I, I'm almost done. C, I think you've addressed, because you've indicated that that area is not going to be, that rear area is not going to be for overflow parking, so I think you've addressed C. I think the rest of these comments, I, I would suggest, if you haven't had the chance yet, I, I would think your response would be that you'll address, these are mostly technical issues, that you'll have to address on the site plan to the satisfaction of the TRC.
I believe so, I guess there was something about the speed hump, but that's something, it sounds like we could go in with an application for that.
Yeah, that, that's something that they can handle, your client can handle by administrative site plan approval with staff. And then again, the rest of this, rest of the comments, I think, are, I don't know if they're necessarily big picture issues that the board needs to discuss, Mr. DeLuca.
Mark, I have a question. The, the playground area, it's not built where it was proposed. Does that require any relief? I mean, while we're here, if it does?
I, I honestly don't have the answer for that.
Okay.
Because I, I, I've heard, I haven't seen it with my own eyes. You know, I, I would think it may not, because usually the, that rear property line is, is to an industrial zone as opposed to a residential zone, so it probably, for example, doesn't violate a buffer requirement.
Yeah, I was just looking on Google Earth and it's, looks like it's almost equidistant to the residential property line and that industrial property line.
Let me look on Google Earth myself and I'll get back to you. I guess, Mr. DeLuca, is the answer for the rest of the comments that you'd comply or do you, or is there any, any one of, any issues you want to bring to the board's attention?
Okay, so I guess the only thing I want to clarify is comment number five regarding the, this block shall be minimum four inches by three inches? What can you say about that?
That's a, that's a stray piece of CAD for Somerset County for their signature block.
Okay.
And then, the unlabeled rectangle behind the building, is that where a playground was previously proposed and was actually constructed in this corner?
Yes.
More closer to the, the, I guess, what? The edge of the property line?
Right.
Okay. And otherwise, otherwise, yes, I, I believe we can testify that, that we will comply.
Okay, and then there's, and then lastly, there is a report from the environmental commission. It looks like, again, some of these comments were in the TRC report. Again, they were reviewing the original submittal. So they're asking for more information on the buffering to mitigate the, what the applicant is proposing. Again, they've provided the exhibit and the testimony tonight. They're asking for the true removal and replacement plan, which is chapter 222, which is an ordinance requirement, which you'll have to do per the ordinance, you know, as a follow-up to if the board approves it. Shade trees should be planted along the periphery of the proposed plan area, so, and the board can decide whether you feel the buffering is sufficient, but at least they have addressed that issue. Or I should say they've made a proposal to address that. Recommend the use of native and pollinator plants that provide stormwater management.
If you have. Some of those plans do address that, yes.
They say a soil erosion sediment control plan should be submitted, but you said there's no grading.
Right, and the most we would do is get a, a letter from the district just saying, you know, a letter of non-applicability.
Okay.
Not what the board wants.
And then they say LED lighting should be used where feasible for all outdoor lighting. Is, is the proposed lighting LED?
Yes.
Okay. Those are the reports that have been provided to the board.
Any other witnesses?
No other witnesses.
Or questions?
Just a technical point, was the last exhibit illustrating where the buffer trees? Was that submitted? Because I don't think I saw it in the packet. We saw the ones where the proposed removal.
Was just the trees being removed?
Correct.
But what's shown, or what was shown up on the board was your actual plan for the location of the replacement.
Yeah.
Circulated.
That's, we, let's see, that was submitted, I don't know, like a week or two ago, the board. And that's the plan that shows what is being proposed for the buffer. What was handed out this, today was the one showing.
What I, what I handed out was the removal plan and this buffer landscape plan was submitted.
With the mark on both as exhibits.
We could mark this as A2 if it's not in the board's possession.
Just to, just to be safe, let's do that.
Okay, yeah, so this, this is the buffer landscape plan and it's dated November 11th, 2023?
So again, I'll provide a little bit of background. The applicant did submit these plans, but they did not submit them in time for environmental commission and staff to do new reports. So we weren't going to give them to the board in advance, because then you would have plans and you'd have comments on another set of plans. So the understanding was that they were going to provide these as exhibits at the hearing. So yeah, I guess they should be marked as exhibits.
Thank you.
That was my only point.
Okay, anything else? Open to? Just to speak, so we'll close. Anything you want to add?
I think there's nothing I want to add other than just to highlight that this, the purpose of this area is for children's recreation and really to educate them in, in gardening as part of the, the school operations. Thank you.
And it will only be used by the school, right?
Correct.
Okay, anything from, any discussion from the board or motion?
Yeah, Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm doing a lot of speaking tonight, but I do think I have to clarify now that we've heard testimony on what the variances are, so you know what the motion would be. Because again, originally what was submitted, they had no buffering, now they are proposing buffering. I think, let, let me read the language of... Actually, Rich, you know what, just to answer your question about, let me get, there was that question about the playground. Let me see if I can get to that. Oh yeah, so it is... Yeah, I do see it, it's basically kind of in that lower left-hand corner. It looks like it's closer to the, there is, you may have it on your phone, but when you look, you can see that there is that double staggered row of, of evergreens. I don't know what, this isn't telling me what the date is, but I guess a question for either, I'm not sure, the engineer or the, or the applicant, is that reflective of existing conditions? Does that double row of evergreens go all the way to the back of that property?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so, again, so I, I think the answer to Rich's question is I don't think that that playground is, is creating any issues, because there was buffering that was on the approved site plan that was required and they've maintained that buffer.
There's no like required setbacks or anything for that?
No, the only thing I would say, I wouldn't say there's, there's, I would, I don't think there's any setback for the playground, but the buffering can't have anything in it except for buffering. So that's why when I see that, that existing buffer that was required is still in place, they're not, if they had taken out that buffer and put the, put the playground in the buffer, then I would say they would need, they would need a D3 conditional use variance because they're violating the buffer requirement. But, but now that I've seen the Google Earth, I think they're fine.
Right, we can mark that as A3.
So, I think, I think that as far as the approvals, again, it is site plan approval. I think they do, they do need the, the D3 for, they don't need it for the overflow parking, because again, we've, they've established that that area is not being used for overflow parking. I think they do need it for the lighting going over the, you know, extending over the property line, but they've, but we've discussed the fact that it's a forested area and they are going to put, if it's not already on there, they're going to put the, the house side shields to minimize that as much as possible. I do think they probably still technically, I haven't had a chance to review this in detail. I, I think that the, well, they certainly need the variance, actually, I'm sorry, we're doing this on the fly. The buffer that's along this side, what's the width of that? That's fifteen feet. Okay, so what the ordinance requires then is if it's fifteen feet, it has to be double staggered row and a fence, but it has to be a solid fence. So to the degree that's not a solid fence, I think you still technically need the variance. And on the, on the, the top side, you know, the, this board has seen, the ordinance technically requires that double staggered row with the solid fence, but when there, where, when there is existing trees that can remain, this board has commonly, you know, I guess essentially not required the applicant to take down all the existing trees just to put in new trees. So, you know, I think the, so I think, you know, I think the real question there is if the board is satisfied that the combination of the fence, even though it's not solid, there is nonetheless a fence proposed, the proposed trees that they've added with the existing landscaping, do you feel that's sufficient to screen the residential use, which is a townhouse development to the, to the top of the plan?
Can we, can we make a condition that, you know, prior to the issuance of a CO or whatever, finalizing document, that someone from the township walk and verify the, the buffer?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, everyone clear? Now, we will motion.
Okay, I'll tip this. I'll make a motion for...
I'll make a motion for Muslim Foundation, ZBA 2300017, for final site plan with a D3?
I think perhaps the motion may be, it'd be preliminary final site plan with the conditional use variance, conditional use variances as discussed, subject to the plans presented on the exhibits before the board. I think that, I think that's essentially what is being proposed to you. I don't recall there being any other conditions that have been verbalized, other than what's explaining, a lot of times there's conditions, like applicant agreed to this. These plans kind of speak to what their proposal is, so I think, again, preliminary and final site plan for the conditional use variances as discussed, subject to compliance with the TRC report, and revising the site plans to be consistent with these exhibits.
Can I say what he said? Okay, so.
And just, just to be a little bit more specific, those variances are pursuant to section 112-37K1 and 3 of your ordinances. Fencing and.
One want to venture, or second?
Well, let's finish the first. It seems to me that the one thing that we talked about that wasn't in the details of the TRC report was the idea that we don't want them using amplification or amplification outside, or music amplification outside. That's, and then, if we can add that, I'll second.
Okay, works for me. Charlie Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepard?
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, we'll have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move that we adjourn.
I second.
Thank you.
I oppose. Everybody have a happy holiday.